Follow the order of the meeting of the council for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023. Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. We have 11 members present and voting in civic clerk, 11 members in the chambers, and one member excused.
All right. Thank you, clerk. Now, please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Hutchinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with all the majesty of its heart.
Alder Hutchinson.
Okay. You may be seated, please. Thank you. As this council gathers here to make decisions affecting the people of Green Bay, we lift our heads to open our eyes and open our hearts. Our duty is to look to the community that we all share, the examples we make, and the legacies we leave. That should be our noble intention. Amidst a world that occasionally magnifies our distinctions, let us celebrate our unity as human beings here in Green Bay, Wisconsin. May we extend the bridges of cooperation and nurture the seeds of unity among all people regardless of the canvas of the cultures and beliefs on which we paint our existence. Let our interactions be a testament to the transformative power of acceptance, compassion, and collaborative coexistence. Let this be our most constant success. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Very well said. Onto approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Motion by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson to approve the minutes from September 19, 2023. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Any changes here? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Report by the mayor, wearing a pin tonight from the Golden House, which has been operating a campaign which started last October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's been a great campaign, a very necessary one unfortunately, but it's proven to be pretty successful in garnering a lot of people reaching out to the line here, 920-212-SAFE. So we just encourage all of our city council to share this campaign. There should be some news stories surrounding an event that Chief Naught, Chief Davis, and I, and a number of community members and leaders participated in. So October, as I said, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we'll just encourage you all to participate in raising awareness and doing everything we can to prevent domestic violence in the community. That's pretty much all I have for my report other than go Brewers. So we'll move along to announcements for our council. Alder Scannell.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Friday, the 6th, coming right up here, at Seymour Park, they're having the Food Forest and Neighborhood Garden Event. They're installing the food forest and planting, mulching, watering, doing garden work, harvesting, and they're asking for volunteers. Anybody who would like to help out? They're going from 9:00 to 7:00. Appreciate anything I can, you know, go there and take root.
Very good. Thanks, Alder. Appreciate the pun. Alder Campbell.
Well, that's our last council meeting, but I checked out the quick Green Bay lighting story that happened to me yesterday. I didn't really realize till the afternoon. So I came downtown, went to the bank on my bike, and I thought, you know, we were talking about the dog parks and such, and the fence behind the Golden House. So I took the new trail, and I checked out all the different things we've been talking about in committee. And I ended up all the way out to Alockway, and I turned around, I came back, and then I went on the East River Trail on the east side, and I made my way over that way. And I checked out the old park where my kids used to play baseball, and me too. And I turned around there and like, wow, it's really changed a lot here. And that's getting close to my old neighborhood there off Liloak Lane. So I turned around there, there was a couple of people on a two tandem bike there, and I said hi to them, and got on the trail, and I never went that far. I used to work at KI for 14 years, so I knew back in there. He was shoot pheasants and geese and all that stuff back there when you could, at lunch and early in the morning. Anyway, so I got on, I turned around there, and I accidentally wasn't, I was looking at the facility there and the trees that we have for the thing, and it's a good story, so hang in there. And I accidentally went up the curb, and I'm like, just about fell over on my bike, you know. And anyway, I didn't, so I got down the street, and I went on, I went all the way out, all the way out to a lot of wildlife down there. Wow, geese don't want to move, sandhill cranes, whatever, beautiful down there in the morning. I turned around, I came back, thought I'd go see my dad, went down through my old neighborhood, he wasn't home, went to see my, someone else, got home, went and checked on that. By the way, I took my dad's dog for a run in the morning, so nothing, no big deal. Went on with my business, people were coming in, all of a sudden, phone rang, and this lady, lady by the name of Linda, she says, I think I found your wallet. And here I lost my wallet, you know, everything in it, nine credit cards, everything, but my alder card was in there. So she called me up, she says, wow, you're an alderman. Cool. She goes, are you my alderman? I'm like, no, but you should know who your alderman is if you voted. So I kidded her about it. She goes, well, I got an appointment at 4:00. She is the clinical director at Spectrum Behavioral Health. So she couldn't make it to me. I says, geez, I'll give you 20 bucks if you can drop that off. And she goes, well, I got an appointment at 4:00. I says, well, I'll be there as soon as I can. So I went over there and I talked to her. She was busy at the appointment, but I talked to the lady there. So on the, before I left, one of my customers said, geez, you should play the lottery today, you know, lucky you found your wallet. And I'm like, no, I should buy her a lottery ticket. So I was kind of hoping that karma would come around, you know what I mean? And only in Green Bay can everyone, you know, be so honest to find a wallet and call somebody and return it. So I thought it was a good story. And I, she wasn't able to talk to me there, so I talked to the lady there, and I gave her the lottery ticket. And I was like, God, I didn't know which one to give her because I'm like, that's the winning one. But I figured she would probably share it with me like her. So it's kind of like a good karma thing. And she said, hi, Stephen, I'm sorry I missed you at the clinic. However, Selena told me that you left the Powerball ticket for me. How fun. Thank you. And then later on, I said, thank you again for setting a great example for people who just are doing what is right in society. May my misfortune and your great karma you created bring a good, bring you good luck in the lottery drawing tonight, if not tonight, somewhere sometime in the near future. I will share and pass the kindness on to someone else. Sleep well tonight. You are a great person. She goes, oh, thank you for your kind words and forwarding the kindness, and for that passing on the baton, you are a great person also. So I just thought it was a really cool story. I didn't even check the lottery numbers, but it was quite a burden to have someone return, you know, your purse or your wallet or something like that. And, you know, and just kind of like, yeah, there's still a good reason to fight for what's right, you know. Thanks for listening to that, but I thought it was a good story. And I told her I would mention it at council.
Very good.
Spectrum Behavioral Health Service.
That was longer than one of my dad's Fenninoli jokes, but it was still, still good.
So you, do you like your dad?
Okay.
All right. That's all right then.
All right. Onto any other announcements from council? Alder Stoyer?
I'll just, after following that, I'll just piggyback on what you said and just say, let's go Brewers. So my hometown team, and they represent a lot for the state, as do the Packers and the Bucks. So let's enjoy sports and what they do for our community.
There we go. Go Brewers. Okay, onto landmarks commission.
Motion to approve.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to approve. It was seconded by Alder Stevens. Is there any discussion? Alder Burnett noting abstention. Any comments on this? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Onto the report of the Improvement and Services Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Campbell. Any items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Report of the Protection and Policy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stoyer. We do have someone who would like to speak to K1.
Motion to open the floor.
Like the, hold it.
No, I'll just pull it right now.
Oh, hold it, sorry. Hold K1.
Yeah. Alder Eck makes a motion to, to pull K1.
I don't think that needs a motion.
Right. That is correct. That'll be held separately. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of the remainder of the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item 1.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve item 1, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Alder Eck, you have the floor.
Motion to open the floor.
Second.
Alder Eck makes a motion to open the floor. That was seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. And we have a registration here from Ellen Wicker. Yes, please approach the podium, ma'am, and if you'd still like to speak.
Um, I, I just wanted to say something about the rat problem. I've been living on Western Avenue for 20 years.
And could you just state your address for the council?
Um, 1042 Western Avenue.
Okay, very good.
I've been living there for about 20 years, and my backyard butts up to the railroad tracks that go down western. And for years, the ditches along the railroad tracks aren't being maintained anymore by the railroad. And I have seen rats in the neighborhood. You know, maybe that's part of the problem because, you know, it's, I don't know, is the railroad supposed to maintain the ditches there?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly the details of the agreement. I know that Director Grenier is on our Zoom this evening, so he might have some information on that. If he is, we'll, we'll have him state it later, but if you.
But I'm just saying, that might be something to look into. I mean, if we're giving them, you know, places where they can hide out and multiply or whatever, you know.
Right.
Because they don't look good.
Right. Okay. Any other comments?
No, that was all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Question, question.
Question, Alder Scannell?
Just a question. Have you reported this to the city, to the inspections?
No, I have not.
Okay, it, it really.
I didn't know what to do. I, I saw the, you know, the news story that you guys were meeting tonight to talk about the rat problem, and I wanted to see what I can do, but I thought I'd report, you know, that the ditches aren't being maintained anymore.
Right.
And I think that might be part of the problem.
Right, okay.
I don't know.
If you see any more, it helps the city if you report that right away.
I did trap one.
Okay.
I went and bought a rat trap, and I did trap one. But I also heard too that they're very smart creatures, and they, you know, they know to kind of avoid traps too. I don't know, is there anybody here that, that knows?
Yes.
If that's true, or?
Yes.
Yeah?
That's why it helps to just, every time you see rats, to report that to the inspections department, because that data can be used then to work the neighborhood and take away the food, drink, and shelter that they need.
Okay. Um, if I do, I still have a trap out. If I get another rat, what should I do with it?
Dispose of it.
Okay. And then just call the city inspector?
Yep.
Okay, can somebody give me their number?
Well, if, if, actually, if you go to the city website, and you go to the request for service, that's the best way.
Okay.
Just put the information in there.
Just tell them I got another rat or something.
Yep.
Okay. I, I don't know what to do. That's kind of why I'm here.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Any other speakers for this item?
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor, made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the floor is closed. Just on this question of, of maintenance, Mr. Pappy, if you have any insight there, otherwise, we'll try to run that down.
So that is a concern. We've had issues similar to that in the past with CN, several of their areas where they've had to cut stuff back, and we've issued orders. Compliance is challenging with them, so getting appropriate contact information in order to get, you know, action movement, but that is a hard bridge area. So that is a legitimate concern, and that's something that, that we're working on, not only on Western Avenue, but Ashland Avenue, the large area underneath Ashland, there's a lot of growth there that can provide a hard bridge. So that is something that's an ordinance that, you know, we enforce regularly. So please, thank you for letting, letting us know, and that's something we'll follow up on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Alder Stoyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill, just looking at the map, you know, there's, there's quite a few on the west side, you know, different calls about rats. Is there, are these people, are folks calling it in quite a bit, or are, you know, on the east side, maybe not so much? What's the issue as far as your thought process, why there seems to be so many on the west side?
So this is complaint based. So what this map is indicating are the calls that we've received. So I acknowledge that there probably isn't folks that maybe don't know where to call or who to call. That's the purpose of like getting our information out, so that's the educational part. So we not, with being complaint based, we need to know where they are in order to be able to take action and get rid of them. So what this map indicates are where we received calls and where we took action, and did proactive surveys in and around these areas and identified where, where they are, where the concerns are, and where we're actively working to get, get things done. So I would encourage all residents, if you have concerns, if you have, if you're seeing, seeing them, if you have concerns about food, water, shelter, let us know. That's part of our educational part. It's not just enforcement of orders, it's working with folks to help them to understand why that they're there, and what they can do, and everybody in their neighborhood can do to, to get rid of them. Because there isn't just one particular issue that's causing them to be there. There's a wide variety of issues, and it's a kind of a complex problem. And how we can do that is by working together and reporting those concerns. So I would encourage people to let us know. They can do that via request for service. There's a section that's specifically titled for rats and rodents. Type your concern in there and send it, that'll go right to our inspectors, and they'll follow up.
I'm, I'm very satisfied for the most part with Bill and his department for coming out when, or listening to the alders when we call in our complaints from citizens and that. So you've done a great job with that. But I, you know, I think some citizens are a little confused as, as far as what to do, as this one citizen just mentioned. And, you know, I, I think the website covers quite a bit of that too. I mean, there's good information on there, so I would, I would encourage citizens to just check the website as well.
And we're happy if they want to, if they're not comfortable with, with the internet and the website, if they give us a call, we're more than happy to meet them in person and provide that documentation and writing. We got brochures and literature, and, you know, we can meet on site. I have two compliance inspectors, and they take appointments all the time during the day and go out and try to educate in person. That's part of our, part of our proactive approach that we're, that we're doing, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, Alder. Any other, Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Bill, for being here too. Just a couple of questions, you know, and maybe a comment or two. The, I think it was maybe, what, eight months ago, when we approved for the addition of a housing and zoning inspector, and kind of my ulterior motive when I had requested the addition of that position, which I didn't make very vocal at the time, was, you know, approximately half of that position was actually going to be dedicated towards these, these complaints. And, and so for those who aren't aware, that individual is out there proactively doing neighborhood sweeps. Been very active in my area. Every time I get a complaint, he's, he's out there almost immediately. So, so when we did approve that position, again, about eight months ago, it, it was a proactive approach to addressing some of the complaints that we did start to see trickling in already. You know, I appreciate the heat map, and this is something that we talked about when I first started on council. Complaints are important. So when you, when you do see those rats, reporting them is important because we put them on a map, and then we can create this heat map where we can see hot zones in the city where we're having problems, and we can deploy resources appropriately, because we know if there's a, if there's a hot zone, there's shelter, there's water, there's food. And, and so that's when we can do the neighborhood sweeps. And, and sometimes I think zoning, compliance, you know, inspections gets people a little uneasy. These are proactive inspections, right? These are meant to say, hey, folks, if you modify this behavior or change this, we can create a better environment for residents in this area. This isn't about coming out and giving out citations and, and really picking other things up as well that, that might be outside of this issue. That's not done. Bill, though, you know, one of the, because I oftentimes get this, right? If you were to, I mean, I think it's kind of impractical to suggest we're going to eradicate rats in the city. So it's really about controlling their population.
Correct.
If you were to kind of, and maybe this is kind of an unfair question to put you in a spot, on a, on a scale of zero to 10, how bad do you think the problem is, based on the complaints that you're receiving?
Probably a five.
Okay. So work to do, but it's, but it's not on a, on a heat.
So, in speaking to that, the complaints, the number of complaints, part of the reason why that number is high is because we have a second compliance inspector position. So when we do get a complaint, what the inspectors will do is they'll do a proactive survey around that entire block, and they'll look for conditions conducive to rats. So they'll look for food, water, shelter. If they see that, that will, they'll enter that, and they'll track that as well. So that'll add another rat-related complaint to that as part of the additional complaint. So much like we do with other inspections, let's say we receive a complaint on somebody has peeling paint on their house, we're going to look to the left, to the right, to the back, the front. We're not just going to deal with that particular house, because if there's somebody next door that has a similar issue, we'll proactively do that too. Same thing with, with this situation with rats. So part of that is I have two people, which has been very, very helpful, but we need to know where they are because we're complaint based. We, I enjoy doing proactive approaches, and we'll do that, we've done that in your district. And like what you said, we'll specifically look for conditions conducive to rats. So all we're focusing on is food, water, shelter, garbage storage issues.
Sure.
Trying to educate folks on what they need to do. Now, if we get to a point where, let's say we have a small number of properties that aren't like taking our suggestions, then that leads to, leads to a further discussion where we may have to take some enforcement action. But usually, we get everybody involved with that, and it's usually quite an extensive process before we get to that point.
So that's an important point, I think, that you just made. And it's not, you know, what I, and if I'm, I'm trying to read between the lines, and I want you to either affirm or deny this.
Yep.
It's not that we're necessarily seeing more rats. We're seeing more documentation
Correct.
because of the proactive approach this body took eight months ago
Correct.
to put an additional inspector on this issue.
Correct.
Would that be a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay.
It's, it also is a fair statement that there's probably folks that aren't calling, and that's a concern to me too, because we don't want to get a false sense of, oh, that, well, it's not a problem, it's not that bad, or I've seen on other medias, they're not going to do anything about that. That's a, a bad approach to take as well, because if you minimize it, eventually a small problem will, will grow into a big problem.
Yeah.
And we want to be proactive at keeping those numbers down versus just ignoring it. And that's kind of the false sense of like what traps will do, is, is rats are very afraid of new things that get introduced in their environments. And not all, rats are very smart, they're very intelligent. You may catch one or two, and then you may think, oh, they're, they're gone, I got rid of it. That's not the case. They just, you know, were smart and realized that they weren't, you know, they're not going to go to that trap anymore because one of their, you know, friends is no longer with us. So it provides a false sense of security, so.
Well, and the one thing I don't want to do though is like diminish or minimize, right, the feelings that our residents have that are impacted by this.
Correct.
And I want to make sure that we are listening
Yep.
and we are hearing those concerns. Neighborhood sweeps or, or property inspections are one tool that we've used. The county purchased the rat traps, I have not heard great results from that.
Correct.
But aside from those two items, is there any other tool that we can or should have in the toolbox to combat this issue?
I, I think just your continued support and encouraging your, your constituents to get the word out and to let us know. That's what we're here for, is we're here to serve the public, and we're here to, if you have concerns, we'll work with you. We'll work, we work, whatever the issue is, we'll work to try to come up to a resolution. And the only way we're going to do that is to try to get everybody on the same page. And that's what having extra people do. So just continue to let us know where there's concerns, and don't be afraid of having a dialogue. It's okay that if you disagree. You know, rat traps, obviously, they do work. You kill, you're caught, and, you know, eliminated one, that's one less. So it's not, not to say that that's not effective, but that can't be the only tool. And it can't just be traps. It can't just be spending money. It's a, it's a wide variety of things, and it's all of those things that encompass things. So the more we educate, the more we provide, you know, those resources, the better it's going to be, and it'll keep those numbers down.
Okay. So if we eliminate the position, the numbers will go down, and then we've had success?
Not necessarily.
That's sarcasm, by the way. Thank you.
Duly noted.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Hutchinson, then Alder Campbell?
Um, what is the phone number people should call for rat, if they observe rats?
You can call our main inspections phone number, 448-3300.
448-3300?
Yep.
Thank you.
Alder Campbell?
Uh, Bill, a little confusing there on, on Alder Johnson's question there. You kind of added in that if you see peeling paint on a house, you're not just going to give the citation on the complaint of, of the non-compliance. You're going to look for other things, and you're going to try to canvass the area.
I, I added that. That was me giving an example.
Okay. But don't you think that's a really good reason why they don't want you guys around to report the rat issue?
That wasn't an example. That, that's not what we're doing. So you missed.
I'm just saying that's confusing to everybody, and to me, that stuck out there.
So the example.
I mean, I want people to not be afraid to, to, to work with you guys, you know what I mean? And that's, and, and I think everyone that knocks on doors can, can say, you know, you're, the inspection department isn't the favorite. I mean, I think we need to like work that together, and, and, you know, they shouldn't be afraid to call you on a rat problem, let alone a problem, and then the whole neighborhood gets non-compliance letters for something that didn't even apply to the original complaint. I, I gotta, you know, I'd just like to see that cleaned up a little bit. So on the rat problem, I mean, associating with that, that, that's just my concern, that's all.
Did you want me to address that?
Sure.
So the example that I gave is the complaint on peeling paint. It, completely separate to rats. The, the example that I use is if somebody calls in a complaint in a, in a neighborhood, and let's say they're complaining about peeling paint, and the inspector goes out, and they, they, the house that is a legitimate complaint, there's peeling paint, but there's also peeling paint to the neighbor's house to the right and to the left. I believe it's fair and appropriate that I'm not just going to make that one person do it when the next person has the exact same issue. Everybody's on the same even, even playing field, and that's what we're doing, and making sure that the ordinances apply to not just the select few, they apply to everybody. And we operate like that. We don't pick and choose. If there's an alder that has violations, we, there's, we're going to address those. We don't, you know, we, we look at the issue, and we try to solve those issues. So we're not trying to make it harder, we're not trying to, you know, make people spend money, or we want people to work with us because our job is to improve the neighborhoods. It's not to make them less desirable or more difficult, or everybody needs to be able to enjoy their property the right way. And that's the purpose of the ordinances and the rules. So we want people to let us know when there's concerns, and we'll work with them to get through them.
I think that's the key.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Alder Eck?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, so I am also on the board for my neighborhood. So what I, I do want to encourage that neighborhood associations to reach out to the inspection department. I did have Nate came and spoke at our neighborhood association meeting, and the education is a huge part of it. And everybody in our neighborhood has been really working together to take down bird houses. I mean, you know, they're encouraging each other, let's all work together to reduce the food, water, and habitat source. So it's really working together and getting out that education of what to do. And I've had many conversations with, with Bill about that, and so I've learned a lot, and just passing that on to others. And, and one of the things that we did was, I asked that some information cards get sent out to the whole neighborhood. So yes, on there, it's encouraging people to report it. So the people are reporting it more because they're being told it's helpful to do that. So again, that it's, it's important to, to let the inspectors know, ask them to come so they can educate in each neighborhood. So just wanted to say that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor will say aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that item has been received and placed on file. Onto the plan commission. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Um, items here to be held separately.
Number one?
Number one. Any others? Is this plan commission? Yes. Uh, four. One and four will be held separately. Any others? Hearing none, others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and four. Um, your wishes on item one?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Sawyer, is pulled by Alder Scannell.
Yeah, I believe there's someone here who would like to speak on this item. So I'd like to make a motion to open the floor.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Sawyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Uh, and the floor is open. So we have, um, it looks like a Richard Maiten would like to speak to this item. And just if you could, um, approach the podium, state your name and address.
Well, my name's Richard Maiten, eleven twenty-four Lyndon Street, Green Bay, west side there. Uh, I want to oppose this rezoning of that area on Emmett Street.
If you could just.
That's something that we're working on, not only on.
Dave, is this?
Thank you, Alder Stevens. I'm used to doing a council. Okay. Now it's you.
Okay. Okay. I think we're good. Sorry about that, sir. Go ahead.
I do want to say thank you for letting me speak first of all, and I'm sorry if I come across with an abrasive attitude, but I have one with this city right now and for the past thirteen years. First of all, two thousand and ten, took a house away from me for eminent domain reasons, which was not a very happy thing. And, uh, now I moved into this house for, uh, specific reasons and, you know, the way, I hope you're all familiar with the way it looks down there and everything. I'm not sure if any of you are. But, uh, you want to put houses up around, surround my house where there is none now. It's a flood zone. FEMA had it listed as a high-risk flood zone for decades until like six months ago. Now all of a sudden they contacted me and said it's a very low-risk flood zone and now you want to rezone it for residential area. Uh, something's fishy about that. I just, we all know FEMA. They're not easy to change a, a move like that. And then you just jump right in to, to start to build a house like that? I just find that questionable. And where the, and I'd like to know the specifics as to why that became a low-risk flood zone. I do have, uh, a request in with FEMA to get that information and they're really dragging on that, obviously. And I just, I don't understand the, this whole thing. It, it's a flood zone there. The property right next that we're talking about on Emmett Street there, nine months out of the year is, is flooded with water, standing a lot of water the whole nine months. In May, when spring broke, I sat there in my yard and just watched the water come up to my house. Came within ten feet of my house. It submerged my whole yard. And I do own two lots there at the corner. It submerged all the way up to my foundation, but it's not a high-risk flood zone anymore? Sounds like you're getting ready to put houses, you know, in pond. I don't understand that whatsoever. And I would just like to inject to that. I also bought the house only because it took my first house from me, which was also on Lyndon Street, by the way, the top of the street. And it, it's a, it's a beautiful lot. I mean, I have, I have deer in my yard all night long. Cranes in the yard all night. Turkey's running around. I have a fox that lives in some bushes on the property at night. He sleeps there. It's beautiful. And now you're going to just destroy all of the, every reason I bought that house. And I just object to that completely. And that's pretty much all I have to say. But I heard somebody mention CN Railroad earlier. I also went to the city to complain about them when they bought that railroad yard right there. They put up lights that are now shining inside of my house. They're lighting up the entire field behind my house, hundreds of yards away from their facility. I complained to the city. They checked it out and said they are not up to code. The lights are too bright and they're angled incorrectly. They refused to, uh, change the lights and he said they were too big, this guy named Mike, by the way, it's all I know of his name, said they were too big of a company to argue with and fight with. So they're going to drop it and I just have to live with it. The city of Green Bay just took a foreign company over a citizen, a taxpayer, a property owner, a active voter, and you just took the side of CN Railroad out of Canada. I, I don't understand that. I, I'm just, that's where my attitude is coming from if I have it right now. So, you know, maybe somebody can do something about that.
All right.
If they're not too big of a company, you know, to deal with.
Thanks for your testimony, sir. Any questions for our resident? All right. Appreciate it. Any other folks on this item? All right. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Just before we go to you, Alder Johnson, was just wondering, Director Rehnerwig, if you could kind of explain what's going on here with this, uh, this parcel or this area?
So this is an area that the redevelopment authority owns some land, the city owns some land. It's an area that used to be in the floodplain that FEMA has now pulled out of it and it's actually taken a long time to change those maps. The, I think the parcels the gentleman is, is referring to are actually parcels that we would use for stormwater management if we did a housing development in that area because we do recognize that there are some water issues there yet. And there would be some, um, construction changes we'd have to do with some lift stations in order to make housing work there. But it's really a large, um, area of land that would fit single-family homes and that's what the proposal would be, would be to change this over for single-family homes. Um, and also we'll, we'll follow up on that lighting complaint, um, that he referenced as well. I'm not familiar with that, but we'll follow up on that as well.
And in terms of remapping, this was a remapping of the entirety of, of the county, I think. Right? On FEMA's part?
You mean FEMA?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Right. This wasn't just a neighborhood that was remapped.
It's not just here. Yep.
This is entirety of the county.
The majority of District Six Old North has come out of the floodplain.
Right.
Which is phenomenal.
Right.
Which is good news, but, mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, to Alder Johnson?
I was just going to have Director, uh, Rehnerwig clarify the, the FEMA rezoning. So that was, again, countywide, that wasn't just this parcel.
Right.
Um, but I just want a clarity on that she already provided.
Okay. Cool. Alder Campbell?
Just, just follow up on that, uh, Director Rig. Um, is it possible to post a map to the city site on the FEMA thing?
So.
Cause you know, everyone has to buy it to get it.
Right.
I've had to do it.
I think, I don't think our city maps are up to date on the FEMA floodplain, but the county maps are. If you go to the county website and pull up their mapping system, I believe those FEMA maps are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And we just received formal word on that within the last week or two that that was actually the case, right?
Yep. It's, it does. He's, he's definitely correct in that it takes FEMA a long time.
Yeah.
To do things.
Absolutely. All right. Any other questions or comments? Alder Sawyer, then Scannell?
Your Honor, uh, Cheryl, or Director Wig, uh, Rehnerwig. Uh, so Richard supposedly eighteen seven fifty-four B, that's, we're looking at that entire parcel on both sides of Lyndon, correct?
Correct. That's right. There's two parcels there like in.
And right now that's General Industrial?
Correct.
Okay. So there is a house there already? Cause I'm looking at the map. I don't see any, I don't see it.
No.
There is no house.
There are no houses there.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that was the question to say. It, right, exactly. But I'm just saying, was there some structure on there before? It's nothing. It's vacant.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's good. Thank you. Close Scannell?
Yes, and I appreciate the gentleman's frustration. I, uh, I've also worked on that lighting issue a couple of different times and, uh, got no traction on it. I even tried to get our state legislator involved. Um, hopefully that's something we can a, address and, and get some a, action on it. That would be great. Um, I do support this, uh, uh, request. Uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's not only this area. There are other areas in the city and, uh, we certainly could use the, the housing development, you know, that we have a housing shortage in this city. And the more we can develop and, uh, provide some housing stock, the better. So, uh, I do support it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Alder. Any other questions or comments? Alder Rick?
So I, I know, oh, the gentleman left. Okay. I just wanted to, I didn't, wanted to make sure they understood the stormwater management part of it. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Seeing none, uh, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. We're, uh, now on L four.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny made by Alder Johnson. Uh, is there a second for that motion? Seconded by Alder Galvin, uh, on that motion. Alder Johnson?
Yeah. I mean, we've, we've taken this issue up. I think I, obviously we, we've all read the newspaper on it that the county intends to purchase it. But even if that deal were to fall through for any reason, uh, I don't feel comfortable with this particular proposal that's in front of us. So, uh, I'm more than comfortable in taking that action tonight. So that is the purpose of my motion.
Understood. Any other comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and that item is denied. Report to the finance committee.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be handled separately. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Report to the park committee?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Items here to be held separately? On the Zoom. Uh, number two. Any others? One and two? All right. Any others to be handled separately? Six. One, two, and six. Going once, going twice. All right. All in favor of the remainder of those items will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one, two, and six. Your wishes on item one?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by, is it Alder Hutchinson? Alder Galvin? Um, and that would, that item was pulled by Alder Sawyer?
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I believe there's somebody in Zoom that would like to speak to this. So I think they're, can double check with that. I'm, I'm thinking there's somebody in Zoom.
A resident?
A resident.
Okay.
Second.
All right. There's a motion to open the floor by Alder Sawyer, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is open. Uh, if you'd like to speak to this item, just state your name and address and, uh, we have three minutes for testimony. Anybody on the Zoom who'd like to speak to this item? Or in person?
They mentioned they would be, if they're not there.
Okay. Motion to close the floor by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Campbell. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve this request, uh, or accept the grant award, I'm sorry. Um, any comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The grant is accepted. Uh, item two.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Johnson. This one was Alder Sawyer again?
Well, I think to kind of piggyback off of one, so I have no issue with this at all. We can just move forward.
Sounds good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The item is approved. Onto item six. Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson, and that was pulled by Alder Campbell.
Yes, Director Dische. Um, I thought when we brought this up in committee, uh, didn't, didn't it include a fence too? Or is that a different issue I thought would be coming forward today?
Um, there, uh, there are no approvals necessary for fencing work along that trail section. I believe the Golden House is installing their own fence along the property line. So there are no approvals needed in order for that fence to be installed.
Yeah. And on the way, on the way, that's one of my questions. I'm just clarifying it. On the way to committee that night, they were doing the side. Yesterday, when I drove through there, they were putting up the back and it's actually an eight-foot fence.
Yep.
So they're going to have plenty of privacy.
Yes.
Around that whole perimeter. So, yeah, didn't we talk about fencing though along the trail? I think it would be unneeded.
Yeah. I don't recall that. If, if that came up at committee, I misunderstood what the question was. But yeah, we do not need to do any more fencing along that trail section.
Yeah. That, that was my only question. That, that thought had changed. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That item has been approved. Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately. Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Sustainability.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on this report? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Uh, resolutions?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote made by Alder Scannell. Seconded by Alder Sawyer. Discussion. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Motion to adopt made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Sawyer.
Mayor?
Discussion here. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, just have the record reflect an abstention on item one.
Very well. Uh, Alder Johnson notes an abstention on Q one. And if there's no further discussion, we will use the board.
Thank you. You may vote.
And those resolutions are adopted unanimously. Onto committee, the whole.
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion to, moved, motion to go into closed session made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Johnson. Alder Scannell, you got the language there?
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five subsection one subsection G Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. The council will thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five subsection two Wisconsin statutes to take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate and to consider the remainder of the agenda.
Very good. Any discussion on that? Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to abstain from going into closed session and not go into closed session because I have a conflict of interest through my employment. Thank you.
Very well. Thanks, Alder. Seeing no further discussion, we will use the board on that motion. All right. We have one abstention and ten aye votes. So we will move into closed session. All right. Motion to return to regular order. Alder Scannell makes a motion to return to regular order of business, seconded by Alder Sawyer. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We're back in regular order.
Motion for staff to proceed as directed.
Alder Scannell makes a motion, uh, for staff to proceed as directed. That was seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on that? Uh, Alder Burnett is abstaining. Uh, anything else? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
I said aye.
Still, still abstaining.
Ugh, the rubber stain abstained.
Understood. Muscle, muscle memory. Onto, uh, R two. This is consideration with possible action on the request by Department of Public Works to award the bridge four dash twenty-three Atkinson Drive over CN WC Railroad, B dash five dash two-two-five painting to Zenith Tech Inc. in the amount of ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion there? Motion to approve by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and that item has been approved. Uh, ordinance is first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Johnson. Discussion. Seeing none. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Motion to adjourn.
Alder Scannell makes a motion to advance these ordinances, uh, to a second and final reading, it was seconded by Alder Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, petitions and communications. You can maybe just take this off the agenda. Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Eck, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we're adjourned.